Uh, can you go your online?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Are we recording it or?
Yes, you're recording on?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good? Okay, I will call a special meeting for Monday, September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five to order. Okay, first up, prior meeting minutes approval, regular meeting from September fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five minutes estimate.
A second, I wasn't here.
You can, you don't have to abstain as long as you realize, as long as you.
She got it. I got a copy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I learned that from Commissioner Braking, actually, she's a member, she corrected that in.
Um, do these in this order, do we wanna? I, I'd like to do, I mean, I don't know that people from the Park District are coming, but I would like to give them every opportunity in case there's other trouble finding a park.
Or something.
Um, so could we move that?
To the end of the minutes?
Yeah, I mean, let's move it to the end, but I guess we have to consider the rate resolution at after that, right?
I guess we're right.
Yeah.
Well, we have one more day anyway, so the rate resolution, all we were gonna do is I was gonna show you who we have so far and give an update on the ones we don't have. Cause they still have till tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, you want to do that?
So we're gonna have to have another meeting?
We can let you know if we don't get it and then you can decide on October sixth what you wanna do. Cause I mean, we just have to have them turned in.
Yeah, we don't, we don't send those to the state.
Right.
Those are used for the state forum and the deadline is October first.
For them to certify it.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
There, the time.
But we always approve them.
Yeah.
We try to approve them by October one, yes.
Yeah.
But who, who, who do you have and who, who don't you?
Yeah, let's just talk about it.
All right, so um, I gave you all a sheet of.
Oh, you've.
Who came in and.
Exactly.
Oh.
Mm-hmm, and the ones we're missing through Camden, Middlefield Township and the um county, the county has to have their uh agenda for tomorrow. Um, Camden, um.
They have two, they have two levies on the ballot, I think they're waiting. And when I talked to them, I told them, you can't do that.
Okay, well, we did talk to Mike, we reached out to Mike.
Yeah.
And um, he filed it and he forgot, but it'll be on the meeting for October.
Okay, because he, he was under the misimpression because they have levies on, I said, no, no, that would be, you'll, you'll then process another one if those levies pass. And then he got it, but for some reason, they all think if they have a levy, how they don't have to turn one in until the levy either passes or fails.
Right, but he does have it, they have a meeting for October.
Okay, and this Middlefield Township, they have a levy, no, they don't?
They have nothing, um, so, and I don't have, I have not heard back from Mary Ann.
Have you, you've reached out to her?
Yes, we did, with her new email address and stuff, but we have not heard back, but she also, it's a part-time job for her, she has another full-time job, but I will send another one to her today. And see if I can get ahold of her.
Okay.
And then, like I said, county will have those on tomorrow and I should confirm that, Adrian's on, he can confirm it.
So do you want to approve the ones we have, Jim, and then we, we can?
On October sixth.
We'll have to deal with the ones that are coming in late, even though.
Yeah, I mean, I see John, the Park District, did, did turn one in.
Yes.
So they did a rate resolution on nine fifteen?
That is correct.
Okay, cause I, I, you know, I know we're, we're not there yet, but I was confused, I, I got a letter from their lawyer when we're trying to schedule this meeting and. It said that this was the first they were hearing of the rate resolutions, but, but they actually answered at their meeting.
Right, they, they did pass it because they're on the ballot, so if they.
No, they passed it because they have to by law.
Ri- right, but they're on the ballot, so if it goes through, then we'll be doing another amended rate resolution.
Sure, levy actually doesn't impact collection next year because they're going to do early, so that.
They won't, yeah, they won't have to have an amended.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, they, I, I agree with Jim, I was confused by that inference that this, this is a new, a new requirement. We've always done, there's always been a requirement of having to have it done by the first of October.
Ironically, we started this because of what happened in two thousand and twenty-two with Park.
No.
We started approving it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure everybody didn't jump around and had extra verbiage.
Well, I, I will then make a motion to approve the rate resolutions that have been submitted pursuant to this um checklist as provided by the budget staff. In its current form.
Second.
Favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, how about Chester Township?
Yeah, let's do that, let's do something fun.
Well, is there a problem?
No.
Oh, okay, we're just regular.
Yeah, just a regular, so they're doing a fourteen thousand dollar increase to their uh special um assessment or special revenue fund for cemetery. Uh, it's a transfer from their general fund, new special revenue fund total is twelve million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six thirty-five, seventy-five cents. Total certificate sixteen million, four hundred and, four hundred and twelve thousand, one seventy-three, forty-six cents and appropriations do not exist. So move.
Second, yes.
Yes.
The other item we have is um. Katie Taylor from the Health District asked us to share with the Budget Commission numerous fund budget adjustments. So we did email those.
Yeah, so I, I, I skimmed over, I guess, one, so, wh- what, I, I guess I'll say a couple. I appreciate Katie wanting to kind of clean up historical problems that we've had with the Health District. Here, I have two problems with what's been submitted. They, we have not had an opportunity to go through these yet, right, cause I understand these came Friday rather late.
Thursday and then both.
We had both people off Friday, we couldn't vet them. It, I, I don't feel comfortable personally approving anything that we haven't looked at. The second issue I have with them is I noticed on a lot of the forms, they're, they've not been executed by the proper authority.
Correct.
So, again, that was a problem that we, a legacy problem that we're trying to correct. I don't wanna start out with a new person who I think is doing it for the right reasons, but we've gotta get them trained to do it the right way. So I would suggest, at least my position is, I would like to see these tabled until we have an opportunity to A vet them and to get them properly approved. Some of the expenses, for example, are, are, are being submitted for changes to their balances that have yet to be paid. So we're changing the balance before we actually make the payment. I think that's the wrong order, I think we should make the payment first and then you modify the balance. You, you don't, I've not, we don't usually modify balances first, do we?
No, well.
Yeah, that kinda stuck out to me as being odd.
I'm not quite sure what they're, I guess I'm trying to understand what they think the fund balance adjustment is about.
Yeah.
Cause it should have been about something that was already paid out of the wrong fund to put the money.
And then you're making a correction of that act.
Correct, so.
We're, we're trying to correct it before it happened, which just don't do it that way, would be my argument, I mean, you don't have to correct it then.
I'm just trying to understand why the.
And maybe we just don't understand, but because there's been nobody vetting it, we can't ask those questions.
Yeah, I kinda got the sense that um, I, I think she's trying to fix prior mistakes.
I agree.
You know, like, transfer cash and incurred costs for the trust jurisdictional cooperative agreement, I think what they were doing was, they weren't to pay Lake County for the agreement. They weren't taking the money out of the right funds and Katie's trying to fix that, that's the impression I got from reading this.
Yeah, I think the whole philosophy was, we're gonna dump all the money into a common fund and then burn it out of that common fund, and I think there's some issues with uh proper paper trail with doing that. A- and so I think, I agree with you, Jim, I think this is, the, the intent is right, but we, we need the mechanics to.
Yeah, and I think she's also trying to address Chris's concerns, cause that might be why some of those funds ballooned, because they weren't paying stuff out of the funds they were supposed to.
Yeah, this, actually, this is very similar to the issue the state had with some of their other grant payments, they didn't like how the money was being moved around. So I, I think we need to, I, I, I don't wanna go do something that the state has already kinda weighed in on the state grant people, even though these are not grants, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna create another problem down the road.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to handling like kind of restricted funds, I think Katie certainly knows what she's doing.
She should, I mean, yeah, she comes from that world, so, but.
Yeah, I, no, I agree, I, I think maybe um, maybe we can encourage her to come meet with you guys and figure this out.
Yeah, I think she's, I think she's hurrying and I know why, she's trying to make, be very efficient and get it done quickly, but this is one time where I think slower is better.
Yeah.
And we need to do it.
Yeah, but it's not an emergency, I mean, we're.
We did like meet with her, but she was, she was trying to accelerate this, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, she's trying to get it done, she's, she's being a, a good steward.
This could all be right, for all I know, I.
Yeah, I don't know, can we better?
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, well, I, I move we table it.
A second.
Yes.
Yes.
So just keep working with her until we get. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be better.
It's gonna get much worse. Couldn't, couldn't have come up, you can't come off the rails more than once, once the train leaves the track.
Katie is, you know, the right person for the job, I mean, she just needs to dig them out of this stuff.
Yeah, and, and there are probably some nuances that are different than the engineers that she's gotta get used to stuff. Um, what's the uh next agenda, is there anything else?
Um, going back to the Park District or, and was there something else the commission would like to discuss?
Um, you wanna finish up the rest of the business and then we do the Park District last, is that? If there's any other bit on this.
I mean, it's ten eleven, I mean, I didn't think they were coming, but. Much longer we can wait. Um, I was gonna, so. Let me just start off with, with scheduling the hearing. So the Tenth District Court of Appeals made a decision September fourth. Okay, so that, that decision was issued on September fourth, we received it, the attorneys for the Park District received it electronically. We then, you know, Chris, you reviewed that, I reviewed it, um, I think it was sent to the other commission members at some point. We um, the Park District held a meeting on September fifteenth where they adopted their tax rate for collection next year. So that's a couple of weeks after the Court of Appeals decision came out, so.
And, and counsel was present there.
Yes, so, I don't know why they, the Park District chose not to discuss this matter at their September fifteenth meeting. Um, but they apparently didn't according to their communications.
That's what it seems like, yeah.
So when we had our meeting, um, we, our last meeting, we discussed, hey, this, we've got this October first deadline. Because let's say we wanted to alter tax collection, we, we would have to do that by October first, right, if we wanted to collect it in twenty-six.
Yes.
I mean, that's the deadline, so, looking, you know, it, it, it has been a little rushed, but that's the statutory process, so. If we were going to do anything differently than what we did back in two thousand and twenty-two, we would need to impact their collection rate.
Yes.
Which is due October first. So we initially set a meeting, I, you know, you have all the dates, we, so we, I think we initially set a meeting, we're gonna try to meet like the next Monday.
Nineteen.
September, yeah.
Or that Friday, yeah.
Yeah, September, so, and you guys met on September fifteenth, which is the same day that the Park District met.
Yeah.
You guys just happen to have your regular meetings at the same time, we originally set the meeting for that Friday, we reached out, Mr. Oros said he was unavailable.
Um, him and their fiscal officer.
Fiscal.
Were, were not available.
And so then um, the response from the Budget Commission was, okay, give us a time next week that you can meet.
Yeah, we said anytime the next, the full next week, the week of the what?
I think except.
Twenty-second?
That was a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was a holiday within there, um, that, that some people were unavailable, um, and they said they were on vacation, couldn't.
Yeah, so then, I think the response, Mr. Oros's response was, I'm on vacation, I'm returning on the, on Sunday, the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
So then we said, well, then we'll schedule the meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
When you're back.
Yeah.
So you're both, you and your fiscal are available. Um, he then responded that the Bar- Park District wasn't going to take this up until they met on October twentieth.
Right.
Which we then said, well, you could schedule a special meeting.
Right.
And then, so there's some correspondence went back and forth, you sent some correspondence.
Yeah, I sent a letter, cause then, cause our, your Budget Commission staff was trying to schedule the meeting, um. So at some point, I just reached out directly to their legal counsel and just said, hey, we're trying to schedule this meeting, you know, from our perspective, we're trying to give the park the opportunity to have this meeting prior to October first, because of that deadline, um, and. They respond, you know, the response back was, I, I, I'm not surprised they're not here, based on the letter we got back, is that, you know, we're gonna meet on the twentieth of October and. They will, their board will be looking at it then.
Well, and I, I, I read the reply that, the, how they interpreted the BTA's um decision and the appellate's.
Yeah.
Um, decision, and they seem to have the impression that it's like an open-ended um ordeal, that they can at any time, cause there was no time indicated. That means forever, they could submit or not submit at their choice and a new budget.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like they certainly think they have some time and, you know, that's their interpretation.
Right.
Of it.
I mean, we still have to follow the ORC, correct? I mean, a court can't rewrite law.
You guys are statutory, so, um, you know, we, the timing we can't control from the court.
Right.
The timing puts us in a place where we had a decision on September fourth.
Which was prior to the submitted requirement of October one for tax budgets, for tax rates.
Yeah.
Which would seem to me that we should then jump into that pattern, we should immediately try to satisfy the pattern. And, so my, my worry is this, if, if they're under the impression they can, they can submit at any time, when do we process the tax rate change? If there was one.
I'm not sure what GPD's position is on that, I think I know what my position is on that, um, and how I would advise the board, but, you know, we'll have to see that hypothetical if and when. The hard.
Well.
Makes.
As, as, as our counsel, I guess, can I ask you this? My understanding in reading their letter was, they were under no specific time requirement based on the decision of the court.
Right.
Can I then interpret then that we are under no time requirement by that same court to rule on it? If we just look at the court decision.
The court decision, so if we're talking about, so the Tenth District, you know, remanded it back and if we're looking at what.
The BTA said.
Um. There, you know, I, I think that what the Park District said in its letter can go both ways, there was no date set. But at the same time, there was no date set and you're statutory, so we are going to defer back to what the statute says. But um, I guess I ju- I just don't know what the park plans to do, you know, I think you're trying to give them an opportunity to resolve this outstanding like tax collection, um, at a time when it's important for taxpayers to know if they're gonna be um, on the hook for this money um coming next year and you've given them the opportunity.
So if we wait till after October twentieth, well, then we couldn't collect in twenty-six.
I don't think so.
Because we're way past the, the, I mean, they, 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 the Park District on the fifteenth set their tax rate.
Yeah.
And they did not include these monies.
They did not.
Well, well, that's assuming that we even make our decision on the day they submit. Which, according to their own, their own interpretation, the court does not bind us to a particular time to render our decision.
Yes.
But I feel like the revised code kinda forces us to decide this by October first, cause we'd have to change the tax rate.
By next October first.
Or by next.
So we're gonna collect this money in two thousand and twenty-seven?
I, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to.
If we're, I think that if you, like, what the statutes, we have these timelines for good reason, because there is a whole lot of administrative work. That there, there is a reason why October.
Projects aren't a process.
They're a process and, and, you know, it's kinda like with elections.
Yep.
People don't realize how long, it, it's not just November fourth.
Right, you have to, you have to certify.
There's a really long administrative process that goes into that, um, and this is similar, there's a reason why we start this process in July, we go through a process and we have it on October first, and it's because there, you need those rates certified, so then we have tax bills that are ready to go out in January for first half collection in February, and there's a lot of work that goes into that, so I do think it's not that you passed the deadline, it's just that you passed the deadline for this year. And then you're looking into two thousand and twenty-seven collection is.
Yeah, what, what is most surprising to me, I guess, is I concluded after reading how off the rails the interpretation can be of the decision that was made, that clearly the BTA doesn't understand the budget cycle any better than perhaps the park. The, the, the budget, you, they, they, they remanded with no, with no guardrails. They based, and so, and maybe that's why they remanded, said a de novo. Because to de novo, you have to understand it in order to rule in our stead, right, you have to understand what the rules are. And now you're a lawyer, you guys probably can't say much and I get it, I'm not, so I get to say anything I want. And, and my worry is, we've got a, you know, a, a body that is supposed to be the governing body and the oversight, not understanding the process that they're overseeing. And they've made a decision to group, to a group that is interpreting it the way they're, they've written it, and unfortunately, it's written without any without regard to the ORC, where, where there are legitimate deadlines that have to be met, for example. I believe in the letter they wrote, they wanna be able to advertise this to the public, that was one of their reasons why it, they needed more time, in a sense. It's, it's ironic to me, advertise it for what? For, for, for what, it's a historically rewritten rule. You, you, how do you, that was never addressed in the BTA's decision or in the appellate's decision. Advertise, they didn't say you must follow the budgetary process, that's a new interpretation of the BTA's ruling. The BTA said they may or may not, on their desire, submit a new budget. They then announced that, well, we have to follow the process, well, you can't pick the process for advertising and ignore the process for when we have to submit the tax rates. That's my argument, I think we're cherry picking here, probably because people don't understand the process of budget.
Yeah, I, the BTA did not say go through the tax budget statutory procedure again, I mean, what, what are, what are they gonna do to, to, something July twentieth?
Yeah, and my argument is, I don't, how can they rewrite law, I don't understand that, I, I didn't know courts can do that.
I, I think the BTA is like, is telling them, submit a new budget, which they've had since, they've been able to do since September fourth.
Well, there may have been some assumption, I, I kinda read between the lines and said, well, obviously, we've had a lot of time between this, they would have already had that in their head. You, you would think, they appealed on some basis. You would think that appeal on, would be on the basis of, we had projects that we wanted to do, that we were not allowed to do because this money was taken from us, I would think. But there's no evidence submitting that and.
Did they ever submit a budget to the BTA, a revised budget?
No.
Okay. Well, I mean, listen, I, I, I wanna work with them, but I feel like we bent over backwards to schedule this meeting, I mean, we, we ended it with we will meet at any time before October first, the, the deadline, or even on October, I guess we could do it on the first.
If they have come back and said October first, then, yeah, I mean.
I, I, I really just don't know.
Said, let us know when it works for you, because we were hitting such a wall.
It's almost been a month, I, I, I just don't, what are we, I mean. So now we're, I mean, do you, if we don't consider this now. And they, they can appeal again, I mean, if they, if, you know, I mean, I'd like to put in the record, you know, our, your letter to them with the emails attached and, and their letter back.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll submit that.
Are we, are you, are you proposing we, we?
I said we conduct a hearing.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I, I've done some homework, so I'm.
I mean, I'd rather just conduct a hearing. I, I mean, the hearing is, the, the whole thing is just crazy, because.
Well, he's.
We jump at a time machine.
We're getting into DeLorean and we're gonna dial back.
So we're gonna go back in time and, and have a hearing on a, a, you know, back in, for twenty twenty.
Is it twenty 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 two for the?
Twenty twenty-two tax budget. Twenty twenty-two tax budget, so we're gonna go, now, the fascinating part to me is when we normally have these hearings. Or. Trying to predict the future and we're trying to look at revenue and expenses based upon. History and look at that moving forward. We now have the benefit to know what the park district received in revenue and what they spent for the last forty years.
Yes.
So that's the crazy part to me. We're not, we're not really going in a time.
Because you understand the budget.
We're going in a time machine, we're going in the DeLorean, but we've got the gray sports almanac, right? Because we know what they, we know what they spent.
Well, Biff.
But you know what I'm saying? Like, we know what they've spent. So we have.
Yes, we do.
Knowledge of the future.
Yes.
But we're holding the.
Yes.
So, okay, so as long as we're on the same page, what type of hearing we're supposed to conduct?
Well, I I don't know how many jiggle lots we're going to talk about here, but that's.
Okay, so. I mean, so we're just gonna have to hear.
Yeah, if that's how the board wants to proceed, yeah.
Okay, so then I would like. I'd like to open the hearing for the jug of park districts twenty twenty two tax budget. And. Could you go through the numbers?
I would be glad to.
So so just so we know, on remand, we prepared. A set of budget numbers. Now, just so that I'm clear, are the numbers you're reading, the numbers that were submitted or the corrected numbers for balances?
I'm reading the corrected numbers that the official executed certificate was signed.
Because we have the benefit of knowing because of our prior hearing that there were certain balances that were submitted. That were incorrect, previous balances. So I believe it was tw- uh twenty nineteen and twenty twenties. Is that correct, those two balances?
Wait a second, is the one point nine million missing from this?
Yeah, it's not quite one point nine, it's like a million eight hundred and forty nine thousand or whatever, but we rounded it as close as we could.
But the point is, the 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 cash balances have been corrected to the correct cash balances. You recall their submitted budget, their prior two years submitted. The it was it was duplicated, it was, there was an erroneous.
I know that.
Well, that changes cash balance. Because they did math within those erroneous columns. This is this is correcting that math.
When we, okay, when we went through the original numbers back in twenty twenty one. Was it this sheet?
No.
No, what did you change on this sheet?
We changed this figure right here.
The estimated revenue?
Yes, in the general.
And the beginning balances.
But but the estimated revenue.
The following budget cycle when Jen Pay was on board had all of those balance adjustments.
Oh, okay, that this is after the changing of the guard.
This is when Michael Frederick was there.
Right.
And so the cash balance is correct of what they had. And then it was the next year when Jen Pay came on board that we had picked up all of those adjustments.
Okay.
Is this sheet?
No.
What actually happened?
Correct.
Okay, so this is us removing the money.
Correct. That matches.
So that's probably not what we should read.
Well.
What else can you possibly read? We read.
About what actually happened, it's about, remember, we're. We have the knowledge of the future, but we're in the past, so. We have to do.
Because because the reason why, Jim, is because. Their ending cash balance was off by one point eight five million dollars.
Okay.
So. It it was off because they. Yeah, this is the spreadsheet that they submitted back then.
Yeah.
And we determined that they failed to provide us with a twenty nineteen column. And instead, they duplicated their twenty twenty one columns.
So let me just ask a question. Back in twenty twenty one. Did they tell us that they were going to spend seven million three hundred eighty seven thousand three hundred and eleven dollars in twenty twenty two?
That is correct.
Okay. So. So this is, so they were showing that they would have an estimated cash balance of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay, and that is.
Well, they they actually showed this as their cash balance, I'm sorry, two million one ninety four nine oh six.
Okay.
Because that already has.
The one point eight five peeking out.
I did bring what what they, what we read off and when we submitted.
Yeah.
I have that as well from the minutes of August sixteen.
Okay.
Of twenty twenty.
Then we're gonna get into the capital reserve.
The errors were in multiple funds. There there were three funds that were affected by error.
Okay, well, okay, so we're gonna read the numbers and then and just so everybody's on the same page, the numbers reflect. From a revenue standpoint, what actually happened.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, okay.
This this sheet.
Right, what the what the budget commission agreed to, correct? What they approved for their revenue.
So why does it say requested six point? Because that was what they requested.
Correct.
Okay. So we're, I I guess my point is maybe the estimated revenue should be what they requested. Because we haven't taken this action yet. I know this is what actually happened. But we haven't done it yet. Do you follow me? Because we're in the time machine.
Okay, so I mean.
Am I wrong?
I can say that they're requesting. Say they're requesting that amount and this is the amount that was considered.
We have, yeah, we usually would approved, but this is really should say considered.
Right.
So let's strike, uh for the record, let's strike the approved and the four point nine five million dollars.
Okay.
And and so let's just use the requested as part of the submission, if that would make sense. So that number should be six million eight hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
That's what we're considering.
Yes, and that's going to change that cash balance.
I mean, am I wrong?
No, you're right.
What I'm saying?
I follow exactly.
Okay.
It's going to change their cash balance quite a bit.
I'm not the one who's supposed to be doing math here.
Yeah, we should, more than Rob, I should do this math. Then we should compare our answers.
Okay.
When you put your shoes back on, let me know, Jim.
I come up with a estimated cash balance of two million two hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred dollars.
That's what I got.
Look at that. Amanda used a capital.
Okay, so could you read the general fund?
You want just the general fund?
Well, read that one first.
The other ones are not.
The other ones are unaffected.
Right.
There's no change. I don't see any change from the requested to the approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, alright, so um the beginning cash balance for January twenty twenty two for unencumbered cash. Would be two million seven hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. They were requesting revenue in the amount of six million eight hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Their estimated expenses are at seven million three hundred and eighty seven thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. Leaving an ending cash balance of two million two hundred and thirty eight thousand four hundred. The budget commission will consider six million eight hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and sixty for the revenue figure.
And you want to do the other funds?
Okay. Um, the land improvement construction has a beginning cash balance of nine hundred and eighty one thousand nine seventy eight. They requested revenue in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand, uh which the budget commission would consider. Estimated expenses at two hundred and eighty thousand, leaving an ending cash balance of one million three hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars. The retirement reserve fund was submitted with a beginning cash balance of seventy five thousand four hundred and ninety two dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of five hundred, which the budget commission would consider. They are not listing any expenses, leaving an ending cash balance of seventy five thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars. Capital reserve fund has a beginning cash balance of four hundred and ninety six thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars. They requested revenue in the amount of six thousand five hundred, which would be considered by the budget commission. And estimated expenses at three hundred and five thousand, leaving an ending cash balance of a hundred and ninety eight thousand three hundred and eighty five. The canine fund had a beginning cash balance of a hundred and ninety three dollars. They request requested revenue in the amount of one thousand five hundred. Which the budget commission considered, uh estimated expenses, one thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars. Leaving an ending cash balance of a hundred and fifty nine dollars. Total mileage for tax year twenty one twenty two was point seven. Um, point nine and point four, those. For total mileage of two, but that was after the adjustment.
Do you want to start?
Go.
Okay. I have, yeah, I have questions, but you may have the answer. I kind of want to, so so again, I don't have the gray sports almanac, but I suspect. Somebody here does, so. I so that is, so the problem we always run into is when we look at the estimated. Unencumbered cash balance for one one twenty two. That's based upon the current year budget. And so the the problem we're always running into with entities, I'm not picking on the park district, this is all the entities is. We're in the current year of the budget, we're approving their next year budget. And we need, we're starting their unencumbered cash balance based upon what they were predicting to do in their current year. Which is no almost never correct.
Yeah.
And in some instances, it's wildly off. So and that was the problem we ran into the county years ago. You know, the county would, we're in the current budget year, the county says, well, we're going to have a five million dollar cash carryover. We're in the budget year, so we're basing the next budget year on what their estimate will be January first. And then it ends up being twenty million dollars, which blows everything out of the water, but we don't know that until we get there, right? So what's what's interesting here is what the park district told us, and and again, this is, everybody does this. I mean, that's and and you don't know. What the park district told us was that their estimated. January first twenty twenty two uncovered cash balance, they estimated it at two million seven hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. What would interest me to know is. What was that number really? Because that changes everything, but we normally don't have the benefit of that, but I, but we do now. That feeling you would.
Yeah.
Have all that information, so.
So I looked at this. Like three different ways. Let's just look at it as. We we are in the time machine and we we don't have any benefit of knowing the outcome. Okay. Given the numbers that that we've re we changed on this sheet. I'm showing that they will have three million five hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars of cash. As their ending cash balance.
Are you combined, you're combining general fund, land improvement, capital reserve?
Well, well, I.
For all funds.
What I've done is for for the two funds, then I added in the rest of the funds. And I get three million eight hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. That is the true unencumbered cash balance.
Was how much?
As as they proposed, three million eight hundred and sixty four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. That is all the cash balances in all of the funds if we assume everything they gave us was exactly going to happen. Including their current year, ending exactly where they predicted it will end. We and as you indicated. We know all of those are generally off by some degree.
Okay.
So, so that's increases of fifty two percent cash carryover.
So we're in the time machine and we don't know the future. So even if they had submitted their budget correctly with the money in it that we took away.
I I would have a problem with this carryover because it's fifty two percent of their predicted. Expenditures, which is seven point three eight seven million dollars. So I then said, well, what if the one point eight five million went away? And I come in at twenty five percent carryover.
Which is our target.
Which is our target. So that's one approach. That's the approach I would use. Being in the time machine, not having the benefit of knowledge, of knowing what actually happened while in the time machine. So then I said, does the time machine change anything? If reality proved something different. So the scenario I could see happening. Was let's say they were not able to provide us with some projects they were planning on doing. So we did not consider those before we made our decision to reduce their revenue by the one point nine million, which would be a legitimate argument to make. So let's look at what happened, the reality.
Well, is this scenario number two, you're in?
Scenario number two, so now I.
What actually happened?
And now I look at the Chris Hitchcock sheet. So the date in question that I think we have to look at, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong. Is the end of twenty twenty two. Going into twenty twenty three.
I think that that. I think that number is telling.
Okay, wait a second though.
Like. So I mean, so you you have the the budget number of what you start with, but it's also important what you end with in that, in that.
Does our whole calculation? I what what ended up being their actual, what's this?
That's where I'm going.
No, no, you're at the end of the year. I want to know what was January first twenty twenty two.
Okay, well, we can do that too. That's probably scenario in before that I haven't factored in.
Okay.
But when you get to the end of twenty twenty two, Jim, you've you've rolled that up into it already, because it happened. It's real.
Yeah, but their argument could be, yeah, but you took the money away from us.
Okay, so let's go back.
Let's do twenty, let's do your scenario numbers.
So I'm looking at the end of twenty twenty two in the general fund. They had a actual ending cash balance of three million three hundred and fifty eight thousand one hundred and forty three. So they exceeded what we anticipated they would be at by over a million dollars.
Even with the one point eight five gone?
This is real, this is real life.
Okay.
If you look at their park levy fund, their capital improvement or their land improvement fund, they had. Two million six thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars. So you have to add those two numbers together and you get like five million three hundred and some change. And then you have to add a couple of little funds. They had a hundred and forty four thousand dollars. You add that into. So you're well over, I I guess my point is, you performed well. You you were, you had much more carryover than you even anticipated in your budget.
Okay.
In real life.
So let's, let's, I want to articulate this a little better because I follow where you're going. So on this sheet, okay. At estimated twelve thirty one twenty two cash balance, this is with us giving them, this is with them getting their full revenue.
That's correct.
Their estimated cash balance at the end of twenty two, if they had received all their revenue, we didn't do what they complained about us doing. Is two million two hundred thirty eight thousand four hundred dollars. That's using their numbers, but. But fixing their mistake on revenue.
That's not fixing their.
Oh, no, 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 we didn't fix their.
That's what, that's what they would have ended with. That's what they. Yes.
Yes.
And with all of their money. Now, what we're looking at is without that money, what did they actually do?
And what did they end up at in that fund?
Three million three hundred and fifty eight thousand one hundred and forty three.
So even after taking away the one point eight five million. They s- their ending twenty twenty two cash balance balance was still one point one million dollars higher than they had predicted.
Yes.
Okay. And then the land improvement fund, they had, now, we didn't take any revenue out of that.
Right, we 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 es- they estimated it would be at one point three five one million dollars.
Okay.
They actually ended that particular fund at two million six thousand dollars.
Okay.
So they exceeded that number by another seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So and and so I guess my point is. Having the, uh what would you call the book that you had in the time? Wouldn't help.
But that's I'm saying.
It helped cash.
So even even with us taking away the one point eight five million.
They get better.
They still ended up at one point eight million more than they predicted they would have.
At least one point eight million, because there's money in the other fund too. Yeah, so that was scenario number two that I looked at and I went, huh, well, okay, that. The worst case scenario was the one that we that they budgeted, that they that they submitted. That, you know, and that even is fifty two percent cash carryover.
Okay.
We just, we're get, we're just getting worse and worse and worse.
So even if we took the one point eight five million. They still were actually at a fifty two percent.
They were actually better than what they budgeted it would be at.
A lot better, but I'm saying even with taking the money, they were still at the fifty two percent cash carryover.
Oh, taking the money, they're actually going to be greater. Oh, taking the money, they're actually gonna be greater. So taking their money is what they actually performed at.
Yeah.
So if I take, I gotta calculate it, let me do it, cuz I'll use their actual expenditures too, in the general fund. Three, three, five, forty-three plus, two, four, six. I'm gonna throw away the hundred, well, I'll add, to be fair. Seventy. Okay, their total cash, unencumbered, in actuality is five million, five hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy. That's actual performance, taking away one point eight five million dollars. That is indicative of, by divided by their actual expenditures, which for the record are actually higher than what they predicted they would be. So. Their actual cash carryover is sixty-four point seven percent. It got worse, not better. We went from fifty-two percent cash carryover to sixty-four percent cash carryover. And that's even after their actual expense expenditures in that period were greater than what they budgeted.
And that's what I wanna ask, what was, what was their actual expense in their general fund for twenty, um, twenty-twenty-two?
Eight million, five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-six.
So after we took away the one point eight five million?
They spent more than what they budgeted.
They said they, they spent more than a million dollars, more than they said they would.
Yeah, they estimated seven million, three hundred and eighty-seven, more than a million dollars, yeah.
So we took away the money, they, they said, we're gonna have to fire people, close parks. I remember a lot of the rhetoric that was going on on both sides, to be fair. Um, and then they proceeded to spend more than a million dollars.
More than a quarter more than they budgeted.
Okay.
And they ended up with twelve percent more cash carryover than they predicted. They did it better than they thought.
So scenario number three, giving them the one eight five and then with.
Yeah, and you could see where that goes.
I'm kinda curious, though, what's the, what's the cash? Oh, I thought you already had it.
No, the third, the search and it was a hybrid. It was actually taking their submitted cash balances on their first amended certificate and running these numbers, which is how this, how these numbers are really formed, but it, it's a moment in time indicator. So you can see where year over year, example is year over year on their, they're, they're given a certificate at their budget hearing, which is an estimate of where they'll be. So, so those, that's one way of looking at it. In August of twenty-twenty-one, we gave them an estimate certificate of estimated resources for January first of twenty-twenty-two, that they would have a total of eleven point seven nine five million dollars. A year later, or, I mean, a few months later, in February of twenty-twenty-two, they had twelve point eight three million dollars.
That was, that was when they figured out what their actual was.
That's when it, that's when real life kicked in. And then in January of the next year, January sixth of twenty-twenty-three, they had twelve point oh one four million. They didn't suffer. They only went down by less than eight hundred thousand dollars, and yet they were up from the year prior by over a million dollars. So the bubble that, that you would have expected would have been when the money was taken. In fact, the bubble did occur, but it was inverted. Rather than them dri, dipping, they went up.
So.
My argument is, I don't think we took enough. That's having that little book that though, that I could tell who won what ballgame.
Yeah.
In the time machine, I would have said moving them to twenty-five percent cash carryover is what we tell everyone they should be at. And that is taking one point eight five million dollars. So I think the decision was accurate.
Okay, here's another question I have. So, cuz you have the, our, our certificate. No, 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 no. So they estimated their January first, twenty-twenty-two unencumbered cash balance for purposes of the budget. They estimated it at two million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. What was it actually?
On the general fund, it was three million, two hundred and forty-four dollars. And, uh, I'm sorry, three million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and five dollars.
How much? Three million?
Three million, two hundred and forty-four thousand.
Okay, so they're only off half a million.
In that fund.
In that fund.
In the project, capital project fund, they had another one point seven million.
Are you, which, in actual balances?
I'm, I'm looking at their unencumbered balance as of January sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, I'm talking January first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, hang on. I have February's, which is close.
Well, no, February would have been when they did their.
That is February.
That's, that's.
First amended.
The first amended is a real number.
Yes.
Okay, so what was it?
Uh, in the general fund?
Yeah.
Five million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight.
So that's the problem. They told us when they did their budget that they would have two point seven five million.
My point, I wish I had that problem in my home budget, where I lose money and I make more. Their, their rev, their, their cash balance skyrocketed at a time when you would think it would stay flat or go down because we were, we were driving it too flat because they didn't account for that money. So again, I'm in, in the time machine, but I don't have any knowledge of that. I, I can't. My, my question I asked myself is, what is the most amount of money they could ask to spend lawfully that we re, remove their ability to spend it? And that's one point eight five million dollars, right? So now my question is, in reality, did they have one point eight five million dollars additional cash at the end of that period that they could have done everything that they could claim they were going to do? Yes, they had that and more.
Yeah, so that's an important point, I guess. So, let's say they, 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 they didn't account for the revenue. They, they obviously had, it, it was a big screw-up, right? You know, and they had multiple fiscal people and that has substantially improved now. Cuz they have a seemingly a good fiscal person. I mean, that's right, she's, she's good.
Yes, she communicates well, I will say.
Yeah, I mean, I, we have seen a lot less problems from my perspective, so. So they're having fiscal problems, they didn't account for this one point eight five million. But to your point, okay. So we said we're gonna take it away. They said, you know, we were unfair, we weren't giving them a chance. So let's say they had come in and said, that, all that money you're gonna take away, we, we were gonna add, even our tax budget's been submitted and advertised and we can't change it, but now we're gonna add one point eight five million dollars worth of projects. Spend it all. They're gonna spend it all so you don't take it away. We're gonna buy a new park, build a new bridge, whatever. How much would, how much would they still? I mean, I don't even think you have to do the math because you, we took it away and they still had eleven million dollars?
Yeah. Give the exact amount of money, the one, one point eight million, what's the exact number?
I can get it for you.
Oh, it's one point eight five, is that reasonable?
Yeah. What'd you say? I said, I think so, yeah.
Okay, one point eight five million, it would make this two million. Let's say they did spend all of that on projects, so on reducing their total cash by the amount that they could have used on those initiatives that we could have been guilty of taking the money in order for them to perform. So you divide that by they have twenty-seven point three percent cash carryover.
Even if they spent it all?
Yeah, so my, my point is you should spend it. You, you have it. You had additional money, you could have spent it and still had twenty-seven percent cash carryover, which is well within the sweet, the sweet spot's twenty-five to thirty percent, right? That's, that's what we recommend to everybody. And I'm taking what they estimated their total expenditures to be, which could be things which may not have been O and M. Typically, when I do my percent, I know Chris does it differently, you may do it also differently. Life support is really O and M. It's not projects, it's not capital improvements. So to giving them all of their expenses is assuming all of that is just O and M, and we know that's not true.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a very, very liberal approach to this math calculation. That twenty-seven percent is probably a lot greater. Because if you.
Spending is probably, I mean, actually, we're, we're loading in an additional one point eight five million in projects.
Exactly.
None of that's O and M.
Yeah, but I did count that as expenditures. I, I just removed that from their carryover. And they would be at twenty-seven percent cash, which is acceptable. I wouldn't put anybody on caution or alert or, oh my gosh, the sky's falling. That's a sustainable figure to have because there's a percentage of your expenditures that aren't paid at the end of the year. You have that cash. So I, anyway, I looked at this, I, I couldn't, I couldn't square it.
How so? I mean.
I couldn't square the fact that we, that, that there was one point eight million dollars taken away that even if they were to spend it, they had enough to spend it. So.
So I guess that, going back to what our statutory responsibilities are, under any of the scenarios, they, they just, they're not demonstrating need for that money.
That's correct.
I mean, where's the need? We're even giving them benefit of the doubt of, hey, you came back and you had hu, one point eight five million dollars worth of projects you could have spent it on. They still didn't need that tax levy money.
Yeah, I think that the devil's in the details and their total cash um, February twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two was seven point seven million.
What was their, what was their total cash February of twenty-twenty-three? So this would be after a full year of us taking or.
I, I have, I have a January sixth of twenty-three.
Well, that's still an estimate.
The same thing. That's not.
That's right. Uh, four, almost five million, four point nine eight eight two forty-nine.
Which is a lot, with that, as a percentage of their.
Well.
It's what, fifty percent-ish?
A five million out of seven million is, yeah, it's like seventy per, sixty-seven, sixty-some percent.
Sixty-some percent cash carryovers is what they actually had after we took the money.
The year after, yeah. A, after the termination of that year, cuz they.
Given them the money, they would have like a hundred percent cash carry.
Well, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I mean, we, cuz I don't know how many of, how much of that money would have been expended.
Yeah, but they, they are, they spent over a million dollars more than they estimated. That's what I'm saying.
It doesn't appear that they throttled back expenditures.
No, they accelerated.
Cuz they were running out of cash, cuz the cash was growing faster than they could spend it at that point. So I, I, I.
So after we took away the money, they actually accelerated their expenditure.
Yeah.
And they still had.
Performed in twenty-twenty-two above their anticipated, what they're budgeted. So you have to be careful because when you get in the time machine, if you're gonna ignore what happened, you have to also ignore that component of what happened.
Yeah.
Right? You, you, you have to, you have to choose.
But ignoring what happened shows a fifty-two percent carryover for the time machine. And that's when we was taking the money.
Right, and the reality is if we wouldn't have done it, it would have been well over the sixty percent.
So, so the, not ignoring what happened, but still in the time machine, they're at sixty-five percent cash carryover. Going in the time machine and undoing what we did, they're at like eighty, almost eighty percent cash carryover. You follow me?
Yeah, no, I, um, well, that's interesting. What, the argument could be made also subsequent years, i- if, if we would undo the twenty-twenty-two budget submission and increase their cash by one point eight five million dollars. Arguably, it may have changed our decisions in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four and in the twenty-twenty-five budget cycle.
And definitely.
And the twenty-twenty-six budget cycle, because there's no evidence that expenditures were withheld, cuz the cash grew, we'll then spend it. I'm not aware of any canceled projects because of this. So you know, you, you, you keep, unfortunately, you, you can make a decision going back and looking at a time machine for a one window, but it does affect subsequent windows. So I don't know that my vote in the, the subsequent tax years would have been the same.
Oh, if they, if they rolled in here with twelve million dollars in cash.
You, we, we, we obligated to.
Oh, we would have taken away a lot more than one point eight five million.
Well, I don't know. That, I, it, it would definitely have been a concern for me because we would have multiple bites at this, at this, at this pie.
Yeah. I, I've never heard, in, in any subsequent budget hearing, I've never heard them say that, other than when we initially took the money and they were.
Well, they, they, uh, their, their. To the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're closing, we're closing parks and then they buy a park. Um, they, they bought Gallo, the, the Gallo property after the one point eight million was taken. They, they did improvements to parks after the money was taken. But you're right, you know, and, and I, you know, we had the same issue. Rhetoric flew during that window and some of it just, you know, it, it may have sounded right, but I don't think there's any evidence to support that it actually happened.
Yeah.
I'm not aware, I, I was.
But they haven't come to any, that, that's what I'm saying, they haven't come to any meetings since we did this.
No, there was a posting on, on Facebook by one of their, uh, park commissioners saying they were gonna close Veterans Park. And that posting was made up to Jim DeVorek, a commissioner. He was, they said, that's a park that the Budget Commission's gonna cause us to close. I don't believe that Veterans Park is ever closed and it's not closed today.
But what I'm saying is they also have never come to us and said, hey, we, we have some deferred maintenance, we have some things we weren't able to do cuz you took away the money. I mean, we've had.
Yeah, they've had, uh, four, they've had four budget cycles or three?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. They've had four budget cycles to remedy or bring that to the table.
In addition to the hearing that they had.
Yeah, and I, so I would just argue that if one point eight million gets placed on top of all of that, I'd have to go back through each of those hearings to know when my, when it would rise to an occasion where I would say, this is too much. You, I, I, I don't know, but I, but that's the problem with dealing with something that you're historically looking at. Because there's evidence after it and it, it could skew it.
Yeah.
I, I know we didn't for those four years ever tell them, you're running out of cash. You're, you're in trouble. I know we didn't do that. That was not in the record. We have told other entities that. You've got a problem here. So you, you have to weigh all of those concerns. So if I were, if I were in this, the twenty-twenty-two tax year hearing right now, my, um, perspective would be, I think you've got too much cash and you've got about one point nine million too much cash. And it doesn't get better when I add in reality of what happened. It gets worse.
Way worse.
So I, I think in a lot of ways, this, to me, justifies the, I'm not here to um, excuse the behavior, cuz certainly I, I, you know, I'm sensitive to the criticism we took, but the actions we took, I think were legitimate and for the right reasons and the math.
And history's proven us right.
Well, actually proved us wrong.
But again.
Could use history, we should have taken more for that year.
Yes.
Because they ended with way more cash than they anticipated, while spending more than they anticipated. This is one time where, I mean, they say, you know, be careful what you wish for. Theoretically, I don't know that the ruling by the BTA said you have to ignore what actually happened. It did not say that in the ruling.
Yeah.
So this body could, in fact, take more. Cuz we're looking at that one year only.
Yeah, I don't really wanna, yeah, but I think at the very least, you guys are well within, it's well within reason to look at the reality of what has happened and the reality of the numbers.
Well, I, the reality of what's happened is they've got a higher percent cash carryover than we would normally permit. Fifty-two percent.
Well, if we're gonna draw that all the way out, what to be, in fairness to them, let's say we are gonna do that analysis, wha, what's their projected cash carryover for next year on the budget, just to prove?
I don't know. We, we're, we're tasked with hearing the twenty-twenty-two budget.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why, you know, it depends what scenario we're.
Well, if you're in the time machine, you can't take advantage of certain things you do know to be true while ignoring things that
No, I agree with that.
Aren't true. You, you, you either do or you don't.
I just, I don't have an appetite for taking more money. Because I, I, I understand that there's a justification for it, but I also I don't remember when they came to us, like, they were just here last month, right? They had a very healthy balance last month, and I believe I questioned their anticipated expenditures. I, I felt that they were, and I'm talking about the twenty-twenty-six tax budget hearing that we just had in August of this year. I, I had some concerns where I felt like they were Inflating their estimated expenses to justify the the left, perhaps. Which which I said is a common thing I see when people put levies on, all of a sudden, they they. Start budgeting much higher expenses than that seem to be with the park. You know, that I I got, you know, that was a possible explanation for their budget submission, but. So I'm saying, we can't even really go by their numbers now. Well, because we're relying on what they're going to say, what is going to happen, then.
Well, I'm just going to live in the world twenty twenty two.
Okay.
And I'm going to know what we was predicted and what we know to be true that happened. So here's what happened in twenty twenty two. They were reduced by one point eight five million dollars. Their total unencumbered cash in that window was five point five million dollars. Their general fund expenditures, which exceeded their prediction, was eight point five million dollars. And their percent cash carryover as a percent of expense in the general fund is almost sixty five percent. That's too much money. So now we've taken one point eight million away and your your, your cash carryover is too high. I I don't know how we can square that any differently than any other entity that comes before us. It shouldn't be sixty some percent. So the math is easy, you know, every ten percent is roughly eight hundred thousand bucks.
So you want to reduce collection by more than one? No, I'm saying you, I I agree that in, if you look at twenty twenty two, what actually occurred and what their actual cash balance was.
The problem I'm having doing.
It should be a greater reduction.
You're right. The problem I'm having doing this is we have never analyzed anyone this way. We've never, there's no history of how to do this. But if you apply the same rules that we've used in looking forward to what happened. And give them full benefit of everything, including the reduction of one point eight million. They turned out to have a cash carryover of sixty five five percent higher, which was higher than what they even predicted they would have. Before they lost the one point eight million, they were only at fifty two percent.
But.
Explain that, explain, explain how cash went up fifty, ten percent.
Because they way underestimated their beginning cash balance. On their submitted budget to us.
That's correct. And so again.
Which is a classic problem.
And it falls back to the same argument. If you didn't, if you didn't budget one point eight fi- one point eight five million dollars of revenue. And your budget still was sound, you didn't need the one point eight five million. That was the decision made then, and I have not changed my position today. There's no evidence you needed that one point eight five million. The taxpayers deserve to have the money back because you didn't need it.
They 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 did not demonstrate need then, and what actually occurred.
Doesn't show.
Does not demonstrate need for that money now. At any point in time from August of twenty twenty one until today, they have never demonstrated a need for that money.
I'm going to run a couple of other things here, just because it it just sparks something. Make sure.
Here's my, here's where I struggle with this. I don't know that anybody understands this, other than some of us in this room.
Well, I know there's, I know for sure there's somebody down in Columbus that doesn't understand this.
But I'm saying, I don't know, how do we articulate this better?
Going through the numbers a million times, because.
I don't, Sarah, do you follow this?
I'm following.
Like, you're, you're just a casual observer that doesn't have skin in the game. I mean, do you? You follow your own saying? Like, I don't know.
I'm with you. I also.
Not that you agree or disagree, I'm just asking if you follow it and understand.
I'm following it. I okay, I will not have an opinion on the record about that, right? Agree or not, I I did pull up, you were asking a little bit ago for the twenty twenty six numbers. I have those if you want them. Anything?
Yeah, what are, what were they? I was curious.
Do you want all of them?
Oh, hey, we do have. Oh, they are right here. So they estimate a beginning balance of two point five eight nine million. Estimated revenue, seven point two, estimated expense, seven point six. Actual, the estimated ending, two point two million.
And we don't know what's going on in this year.
Yeah.
Well, you're not gonna. You're gonna have a cow when I do these, but. Let me just finish the numbers.
Our observer said the Chuck said, the observer said that Chuck said, follow that, but. The previous year's general fund carryover was sixty percent, but in the twenty twenty six. Budget carryover was estimated to be twenty nine percent, so. If all of this is true.
Okay.
They got general fund carryover down to twenty nine percent.
Well, for twenty twenty is what they're estimating for twenty twenty six.
Right.
I will say they have. They have never been ru- even close on their, well.
Well, here's a.
They've never been correct on their beginning balance.
Here's a perspective that I think is gonna. Is gonna say it all. And so what I did is I ran actual. Cash as a percent of general fund expenditure carryover, actual, this is what really happened. In twenty twenty two, as I previously stated, their cash. Was about sixty five percent, sixty four point seven three percent. In twenty twenty three, it went up to seventy two percent. In twenty twenty four, it was eighty two point six percent. So again, if I were using the benefit of going back in the time machine, knowing what I know happened. We should take more, because their cash as a percent of expenditures is still going like this. We didn't take enough.
Well, and that's because in twenty twenty four, they said that their. That in the general fund, their beginning balance was going to be one million, seven hundred fifty five thousand, and it was actually three million, seven hundred and twenty five thousand. They were almost two million dollars off on their estimated beginning cash balance.
And another four hundred in their, in their load improvement, in their improvement fund. I I, all I'm saying is, it, the more data I start loading on top of this, the worse it looks, not the better it looks. A- and absent that, I I think the decision is incredibly. Of more than fair at the one point eight five million, because the math actually shows we're growing by about ten percent. Cash as a percent of expenditures every year. That that's what it's showing. Now, I don't have twenty twenty, um, I I stop at twenty twenty four, because twenty twenty five isn't done. Right? So actual numbers aren't here. These are actual, these are not estimates. Now, we don't do that with entities. If, I'm sure if we pulled up, I'll I'll pick on my town, Russell's. Actuals, they're going to be crazy.
Well, that's my complaint every year.
I know.
Is that they don't estimate their actual beginning balance correctly, and then none of the numbers makes sense.
But our job is to look at what they submit as need.
I understand.
Not to look at what they had, a- and so. We gotta be careful, because. I I I just answered what evidence that something got hurt.
You're right. Uh, I will say this, we've never been able to look, we've never been able to use somebody's actuals against them. Right?
Well, we tried to, but it does, it's.
But that's what I'm saying, we've never been able to do that. So to me, it would be unfair to take more money, because, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I'm not, I I agree, but I'm just saying, if I had to. If I had to make my decision today, from what I made in twenty twenty one for twenty twenty two's year. Based on knowing what I know, I would have gone heavier.
Well, I think you could have taken away three million dollars, it still would have been way too high.
I think you could easily push the two, two and a half million, because you still have adequate carryover on paper. But performance is gonna, it it, your performance would just not grow by as much. We're not cutting anything, we're just not growing by as much. I, somebody would have to explain to me why you had this bloated expenditure and the year in which the money was taken away. And then expenditures dropped afterward. So we went from. Eight point five million in expenditures, the year that we took one, so obviously spend more.
That's the most it ever spent.
Yep. Then they dropped to actual seven point seven million and then six point seven million. So expenditures are doing this. So you 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 just got to say, so you you kind of, for whatever reason. You spent more than you ever anticipated spending in that period that you were, your money was taken from you. And that's after the money was taken from you, and yet your percent cash went up.
I mean, out of the general fund, I think it's safe to say that that year. The year we took away the money, they spent more than they'd ever spent out of their general fund in the history of the park district by a million dollars.
The general fund ending cash balance went up every year, starting with twenty twenty two. Three point three million, three point seven million, four point two million. Your cash balance is going up even after you lost one point eight million. You wanted to go up more? That's, that's the argument of need? That's not need.
No.
Need is, what did you need to spend it on that you didn't? And I can show that you had the money, you could have done it anyway.
I mean, they'll have some reports, but I'm clear on. It's, it, the budget commission has a duty if they're just adding to their cash balance. And they don't need the money. Right?
But the B, but the BTA may not understand that.
I'm just, well, I'm just talking about.
I I I'm just saying, I, I, I mean, we have to actually pass.
Yeah, we have to have the hearing.
So. I.
Do you motion for what you already did then?
Yeah, I I mean, I would make a motion that we reduce the.
Collection.
Collection for tax year twenty twenty two. Um, in the Jaga Park District. By the one point eight five million dollars that. Was previously not included in their submitted budget. Um, for all the reasons that I've stated.
Because, well, because they did not demonstrate.
There's no, which. No matter how you look at it, hindsight or as though we never experienced that year.
So do I need to create a certificate with today's date on it then? Or are we able to go with the certificate from August twenty seven?
I think it doesn't change the August, it doesn't change the certificate that we gave. Is my understanding.
You're essentially reacquering action.
Well, I think though, I think it should say certificate of the Job County Budget Commission. I think it should have today's date, not August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. I think it should have.
Boy, that's been.
September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five up here, but then it should say certificate of estimated revenues for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty two. So I think it should be this exact.
Well, this is the one that is signed.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we can write on this one, so whatever you want me to, and then you want me to circulate that for signatures after you actually vote.
I think we should just change this date.
Okay.
To today's date.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
But everything else is the same. I mean, I I get that that looks ridiculous.
I would not want to be auditing this year if we change something.
Well, yeah, that's a whole nother. I mean, really, honestly, the headaches it would cause if we.
Considered what happens.
Put like a footnote on it, like based off of, um.
I would just put up here, I would put maybe up here on remand from the BTA for rehearing.
Okay. I mean, truly, the date tells the story.
Yeah.
In the context of what we're being told to do.
But like, you have revision with original script, like, just put it up there like that.
Okay, I'll do it.
And and I guess, just to summarize, my argument is. The only amount of need that could have been supplementally given to us would have to equal the amount of money that we've took. Which would be one point eight five. The numbers show they could have spent one point eight five additional dollars, million dollars. And still been fine, still been at twenty seven percent cash carryover. So. The need, if there was a need, it's satisfied. There still is. You don't get two X the money you need, you get one X. That's, that's.
Anything else we have to cover? Okay, so you made the motion.
Yeah, whatever that was, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Yes.
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 Okay.
So we will sign. Sign that certificate.
For the record, I want to make sure there was no, there were no PowerPoints present, no PowerPoints were killed in the presentation.
I will say that, I, and I'm not trying to be critical, I I will say this, you know. Even if they wanted their board, and again, their board had an opportunity on the fifteenth to, to. Discuss this matter, just like we did on the fifteenth, because the the decision came out of the board, but. The executive director and the fiscal person still could have come to this meeting and talked to us. Uh, you know what I'm saying? I don't know why they didn't appear. But they don't need board action to come attend the hearing and talk to us, or or articulate why they need more time.
Well, I think it was back to the selective, selectively picking the ORC requirements and the BTA not having requirements.
Uh, I understand that, yeah, no, no, no. I understand they're trying to justify why they don't want to have the hearing now. But I'm saying, they could have come to the meeting, the 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 executive director and the fiscal person could come to the meeting.
I agree.
I, we could have had a nice conversation with them and explained all of this and and. Tried to listen to another, I I mean, I don't.
Well, I I'm going to keep all my data, because this may not be over, so.
Well, I think you should submit the data into the record for the hearing.
Well, I, okay, my, my data is chicken scratch. Do you want my chicken scratch?
I think we put it in. I mean, you want, just make a copy of it, give it to, or make a copy for yourself, and then we'll give the, you want this thing?
Do we have to sign their certificate again?
Yeah, I'm going to create a new. So this one was correct, because that is the amount of money.
Well, then, so what we ended up with.
But we always say that, that we always say this is what they're requesting, and we have the amount up there that is going to be considered.
I understand, but, no, 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 no. We considered six point eight million, and we only gave them four point nine.
Okay.
You follow me? This is what you read.
We actually did that back in the day, but, okay, yes, it's.
No, you would always do a new sheet if we reduce somebody's collection.
Yes, no, I understand.
Now, we changed the approved to um, considered. That's, that was different than back then. Today, we would, that word would be considered. And then we could, that's an editable figure.
This isn't what we, this isn't what we ended up with, but this is what you should have read at the beginning, which is what you did read. Do you follow me?
But this is actually when we did the calculation, we actually said six. Uh, million, eight hundred and twenty nine thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars is what was going to be considered by the budget commission.
Oh, okay.
Not their figure, we were still off.
Oh, okay.
Because of probably, um.
The calculation was a little.
The collection rate or something?
Maybe.
Okay.
Twenty twenty two, it may have been ninety five percent or.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to go back and see what was on the original sheet.
Yeah, but again, with twenty twenty hindsight, we know it was a hundred and two percent.
Not that that's a ton of money difference, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, is there any general discussion? Um, okay, public, any public comment? Uh, yes, Sarah.
So, I have, I guess, a hypothetical question, um, so. If today or somewhere in the future, you need to decide you have to give back that money, that one point eight five billion dollars. It would be collected in, let's say, twenty twenty seven. So. But let's say I move to Giaga in twenty twenty five, I still have to pay that in twenty twenty seven, even though I wasn't here to. I wasn't a part of twenty.
Right, it's a great point, but that's the problem with the time machine.
Well, not just, it's not just a private time machine. So.
Yeah.
So you, you've just touched on something that I think many taxpayers have privately expressed to me. But everybody has a different opinion on it. That is the problem with people collecting tax money and hoarding it. Because, let's take this and turn, turn it on its ear. You're here in Giaga right now. And let's say a taxing agency doesn't need the money, but collects it. And they're going to do something twenty years from now with that money, and you move out in ten years. You paid for something that you're not going to get any benefit from, and you're already ten years away before it's spent. There's, there's unfairness on both sides of that equation. And we can, we can limit it to say you can only collect so much in excess of what you physically need. That's what that percentage is all about. But when you start raising that percentage and growing it bigger and bigger, and I've heard people throwing around. People should be able to accrue a hundred percent carryover. That's what goes, that's what's dangerous about that. A hundred percent predicted is probably closer to a hundred and fifty percent actual, maybe two hundred percent. You you're paying for things that you'll never witness in your lifetime. Because it's going to be spent when you're long gone, and that's unfair, just like it would be unfair to come back and say. Oh, we're going to charge you now for something we should have charged three years ago.
Right.
But the argument to yours is actually, I think there's an argument could be made. But the argument to yours is actually, I think there's an argument could be made by by an entity to say, but I haven't done the things. I I haven't collected the money and I haven't done them. That's what would have been our decision, had there been evidence to say. Expenses were throttled by one point eight million, they didn't do certain things, you didn't benefit from them, then you weren't charged. Now they're going to do those things with that one point eight million, and you're going to get taxed on it. So I think this is actually less severe than what could happen with taxes.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe it will better or worse, but.
I do. I don't know. It is.
But you're right, there's still people paying a twenty twenty two tax in twenty, it would be twenty twenty seven.
People didn't live there. People who did live here and benefited in twenty twenty two have moved away or died, and, but there's no way to square all that, right?
No, not unless, yeah, I mean, the BTA didn't weigh in on how to square that. I don't think they worried about it.
I mean.
And and I don't sense that the the BTA, I I didn't read in the BTA's decision that the, that the. Budget Commission's actions were called into question from a removing of revenue. They had issue with with our demeanor and our approach to it. That's what I read. I mean, they didn't like how we did it. They didn't say it was wrong.
Yeah, they never ultimately ruled on.
They could have weighed in and said, we're we're going to have the hearing ourselves. We're going to decide if that one point eight million was justified. They refused to do that, and I think it's very telling that they didn't. Maybe it could be that they don't know how to do it, or it could be that their conclusion would have been the same outcome. I don't know. I kind of think it was the first one, but that's just me. I don't think they knew how to have a budget hearing, based on the the decision, but that's just me.
I don't know. I mean, that's not.
It's not unique.
No, it is unique to that. I think it's unique to them. I don't think that happens.
Well, not knowing how is not unique.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying.
It's commonplace.
Well, yeah, among the Budget Commissions.
Yes.
That's very true.
Yeah.
If you drop this into Kioka County or Lake County, they know what to do.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Any other questions or comments? Anybody online? I don't think there's anybody on there. And you confirmed with Adrian's on there, I don't know if he's listening. You confirmed they're doing their tax rate tomorrow?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
All right. Thanks, Adrian.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Anything else?
Go for the business.
Motion to adjourn.
Caroline, beat you. Okay, Sarah.
Go offline, please.
Yeah.